Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry. To the flag, United States of America, to the flag which stands, our nation, God, is the ultimate justice for all.
Welcome to our June 25 meeting.
Sally, you're gonna, I can't even hear you, Sally. Do you want me to shut the door?
You have to talk in the microphone.
You have to talk in the microphone, Sally. It's not the air conditioner.
Try to shut that one.
It's not the air conditioner.
Well, you just have to speak to the microphone, Sally.
I did. Okay. Mr. Rarick, string, elementary strings?
This item was placed on the agenda, request from Mrs. Herman.
Mrs. Herman?
Yeah, elementary strings program. I put it on there because it was part of the three items that were discussed at our last meeting at the end of the meeting.
All right, um, the item is on the agenda, uh, I believe, because we wanted to reassure parents that the program was not being canceled and we wanted to discuss details about how we might continue the program next year.
I provided the committee with three options, if there are other options the committee would like to consider, um, that's obviously within your purview.
So what are the feelings of the committee? Anybody?
So, I mean, because I, they probably can't see what we have, the three options are, see, that we have in front of us, um, are seek a volunteer for the community, um, to work with the students next year. Is it just fourth grade strings?
Yes.
Explore the possibility of developing a memorandum of agreement with the teachers' union and pay a stipend to run the program, to place everything on hold until the position can be addressed in contract negotiations with NEA, those are the three options.
And it says the agreement would not be a non precedents ended, uh, action if we did the MOA.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll start off, just by no surprise, I've been pretty consistent saying that, um, until we fairly and equitably look, equitably look at all the stipends, that, I'm not in favor of stipending through an MO, certainly not in favor of stipending, but certainly not through an MOA. Usually memorandum of, uh, MOAs are negotiated and we're basically just handing a non negotiated MOA, tacking it on for a single position, we haven't done that for any other stipend or position, so, um, I, I'm against it for both of those reasons. I do have a, um, I had a contact with the Tiverton After School Arts, that they do have an organization that would be willing to work with us to come in, they do af, it's called, uh, the Community Strings Project in Bristol Warren, and they give after school strings lessons in Bristol and Warren. Haven't met with them because I, I needed to bring it to the committee, needed to see, uh, you know, what direction anybody wanted to take, they do do, uh, third and fourth grade, we could probably just do fourth, but like I said, I, I didn't pursue it at all, I just got the name and the contact, but, uh, had to bring it to the committee before I went, uh, in that direction. They could do before school as well, I just, like I said, I didn't, I, I got the contact information and that was it. For 15 years, uh, elementary strings has been, uh, part of the course load or class load of, of a music teacher, uh, in our schools and not a stipended position.
It was, best way to explain it was the person who had previously been doing it, Mrs. Bond, had a full schedule, but she, uh, the agreement with, uh, my predecessor was three days a week, uh, she would come in early in the morning, uh, deal, you know, teach the students and then follow the middle school schedule and then leave at the end of the day based on the middle school dismissal, and that was what was in place.
Or they were basically shifted.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, it was, it was shifted, she had a full load and she picked up that strings to be released early.
So, so maybe I'm, I just want to clarify how I understand, I guess I'm not as tall as I thought I was, um, how I understand this, it was in a sense transactional, that this was part of her, in a sense, assigned teaching duty, or that, you know, that position was essentially part of the assigned teaching duties, they just had the hours of the day shifted back, if you will.
No.
Is that right?
No, it was, she, for example, starting in September, uh, assuming there's no resolution, Mrs. Bond would follow the regular.
Right.
She'd have the same number of classes she had this year.
Right.
So the strings is extra, the strings is, and in order to do the strings, the, uh, Dr. Terrell said, "I'll let you go early three days a week," that was the, the trade off, "you do this extra thing and we'll let you leave early three days a week."
So if she's.
I'm still not sure I understand, so, I mean, draw a kind of more concrete analogy, if I work as a cashier from nine to five, I'm expected to be there from nine to five and maybe an hour for lunch, uh, fifteen minutes for lunch. If the store manager says, "I need someone to go from seven to nine, so I'm gonna have you work from seven to three instead of from nine to five."
It'd be like working from seven to five, but two day, three days a week, you didn't work to five o'clock, you got to leave early, you got to leave a little early. Manny, do you, or the elementary, I mean, that's my understanding of how it's functioned, so maybe, maybe I'm not.
What happens in this situation, the teacher leaves early giving up her planning period, so they don't take a planning period on that day, so they, they leave early, so what they're doing is they're giving up their planning period to, to, to make the schedule work, but Mrs. Bond has always taught an elementary full schedule, just like all the rest of the itinerants teach a full schedule, the three days, she, in, one day at each building, the day, she left in the afternoon following the middle school schedule, what she was giving up at that time was her planning period.
And, and, but, but, we're, we're referencing Mrs. Bond, I prefer that we don't.
I think we should talk about the position.
It's a position, um, we did have a resignation from her, I think we need to deal with the position.
Let's just talk about it as a position.
Well, I, I think, as I said in the email, it's an awkward, uh, situation because this activity does not exist anywhere. It's not referencing any contract language, I don't have an MOA with the union on it, it, it's a practice, so it's, it's, we can say we call it.
Essentially, uh, an agreement was made 15 years ago and it was never really.
Yeah, we can say position, but it's, just knowing that it's not documented anywhere.
But if we talk strictly about the position and not necessarily whoever held it.
I'd say the activity is probably.
The activity was, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out if it was compensated or not, because it seems to me it was compensated, but then you're saying it wasn't compensated.
Well, because she'd be allowed, the, the position would say, whoever the teacher was, the teacher is, uh, under the contract required to get a planning period, which, let's say, uh, the teacher's schedule goes from, uh, eight thirty to two thirty.
Right.
And then the last forty-five minutes or hour is their planning period, so they're still in the building, but they're planning, they're obligated to be there, this agreement said, "we're not gonna hold you to that planning period, you can leave at, after you're done teaching."
So then the presumption, so then the question I guess I have is, for that position, what was the planning period for, presumably the person who has that position doesn't leave the school and then go home and do a planning period at home, right? It's kind of conceived of as, or conceptualized as their time now.
Well, it's our time, but they're working, they're, in, in theory, the planning periods are just that, to plan lessons and things like that, if the person goes home, you know, they're free to do whatever they want.
Okay.
It's my understanding, uh, how it was set up, again, this predates me, so, it's been good.
Ms. Mullin?
It doesn't predate me, um, I did have a memorandum of agreement with Dr. Terrell, um, that we drafted because they wanted to start the after school or morning spring, strings program, and, uh, it was in addition to Mrs. Bond's, it was Mrs. Bond at the time, um, her regular duty, so because it was in addition to, uh, the union wanted some form of compensation for that, at the time, we were told there was no funding to pay her, so she was compensated by being released that amount of time early each day, so she was still working the same amount of time, she just came in that much earlier in the morning and then left at that time at the end of the day, um, so there was a memorandum of agreement at the time, um, you know, over the years, we didn't renew it, um, so I'm not really sure legally where that would be, but there was an agreement at the time, um, and then the other thing.
Do you have a copy of it?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a copy of it?
No, I'm trying to find a copy of it, um, because as Mr. Rarick said, it was 15 years ago, so.
I'd have to.
You know.
Well, I think, I think the fact that it's, it's expired essentially, I mean, it wasn't renewed, so it's not part of the contract, so it's really kind of irrelevant.
But at the time, there was one.
Yes, yep, so I wanted to clarify that, and then the other thing I wanted to clarify is, Deb, you said that you haven't done this for any other position, um, but that's not true because two years ago, you guys put in the budget some stipends for music positions that were never negotiated.
We didn't do an MOA for any other position.
Correct, and they were never negotiated, but you did put money in the budget.
And at the time, I spoke against it because I have an issue with all of the stipends that are out there and we're not working them through the contract, I have no issue working them through the contract.
Yep, but I think that created some issues because.
Oh, I agree.
When a person in a position is consistently told there's no funding to pay you and will have to compensate you in alternate way, and then there is funding for others that are doing similar things, it creates inequalities.
Agreed, and I, I really think, that's why I said, doing an MOA just for this one thing, it just keeps us going down that same path, where we're making exceptions, we're doing an MOA for this, we're not doing an MOA for other things, we're gonna stipend this, we're not stipending other thing, I think it just keeps taking us down that very confusing path of, sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't, but I absolutely agree that it would be confusing, it would be frustrating, and that it needs to be part of our discussion and we need to be fair and we need to be equitable, I agree.
I would like to, to just point out for those folks who may be unaware, um, Amy did bring this concern to me last couple months, I told her since we were beginning negotiations, I agreed with what Deb said, and that was the position I relayed, that the committee wants to take them as a group and that we certainly, uh, would not object to working on a stipend for this position as well as all the others, and I gave you two sheets of paper that we've seen before, I refer to this sheet, you can see, like, this kind of emphasizes what Deb was saying, all the unpaid, uh, stipends.
Right.
That people have volunteered over time to do, and I felt, as, and I think I believe I was speaking for the committee, when I told Amy that we would be willing to negotiate that, so it's not as if, um, through me or anyone through the school department said, "we don't want to address it, we just wanted to address it as a whole," so, just wanted to make that.
So that's, I guess, kind of why I brought in that third option of, and I guess you kind of had it too, Bill, here is volunteer, although it wouldn't be a volunteer, but bringing in an outside group just for a year so that we can work all of this into the contract and, 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 you know, talk about who gets it, who doesn't, and, and, you know, get some language that's fair, consistent.
I agree.
Um, so that we don't have these tack on MOAs or these, well, there was one, but now there's not, you know, it really, um, and I, I agree with Amy, I could see how it's, it's frustrating and, and you, and like you said, it's, we've talked about this before, we've talked about it at least three or four times in these meetings, that we understand we need to address it, so.
So, and I think just, again, so much, we wanted really just talk about the position, but it's highly contextual, I think, based on sort of a lot of things that have been said, and because the stipend was before the committee previously and we were, you know, we, we elected to table it because of that very reason, that we wanted to introduce as much equity as we could to the entire process, um, and so it was tabled until it could be more formally negotiated or discussed, um, just so that the, the public knows, at least by my count, we have twenty-three paid stipends and they are largely, um, it looks like athletics, and we have forty-four unpaid stipends for different volunteer organizations and, and advising to, uh, different, uh, groups, if I, if my count is right.
The ones on the left, those are paid, the ones on the second.
These ones are all, okay, so now my numbers.
Those are also paid.
These are all paid too, okay.
Just the ones on your front right are unpaid.
Okay, so that's different then, all right.
But we still have a significant number.
Yeah.
Of volunteer group.
Yeah, it's about twenty.
Yeah, twenty, so it, so that does shift it quite a bit, actually, more, about two-thirds are paid and a third are unpaid, so I misspoke earlier, not now.
And I, I, I just, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to place it on hold, I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, only because I think the kids lose out, because then we don't have, if we don't do anything next year, then they don't have.
They miss out on that whole.
Right. I would like to see elementary strings, um, be an assigned duty of one of our music teachers rather than a stipend position, um, I think it's better for the program, I think it's, it helps us move towards that consistency, um, so in that case, we're just looking, in my mind, um, to find a short-term solution to cover next year, and then hopefully during that time, we have negotiated, um, a solution in the contract, um, that being the case, um, I would be in favor of, uh, investigating either bringing in an outside group with, um, program, either before or after school, and perhaps it's something we should, uh, pull our parents on, maybe they'll find after school. Better than before. Than before school, we've always offered it before school, but that doesn't necessarily mean that our parents prefer that.
Yeah, so actually, that's a, I think a question that is probably worth asking, is why wouldn't we make this part of the, you know, it sounds like it was established, um, kind of on the margin as a program that we didn't have funding for 15 years ago and, um, proved to be popular, and, uh, the quid pro quo, if you will, was that you're allowed to leave early on three of the days, whether you count that as compensation or not, that's, that was the agreement, um, so why wouldn't we not make this part of the assigned duties of one of the music constructors?
If that's what the committee wanted to do.
Right, that would have to be part in negotiations.
You'd have to negotiate it, the, the first thing that comes to my mind is, or the first question I'd meet with the elementary principals on, is that another additional prep? Again, my understanding is, Miss, the, Miss Bond, the elementary, uh, music teacher has a full schedule already, so if you add this into the schedule.
Right.
It's, and it's gonna be an additional fifth somewhere in the budget, whether or not the, uh, strings person at the middle school could pick it up, or you got someone from the outside, if it's an additional section, it's gonna cost X number of dollars.
But that's gonna be the, to Carol's point, that's gonna be the longer-term solution, that's gonna be something we have to get into.
Jerry asked the question.
No, no, I agree, I was talking to Jerry, that that's a longer-term solution.
Just one, one further information on, as far as making it an assigned duty, that duty would have to happen during the school hours.
All right.
We're, we're gonna have to pull students out of classes, you know, some, some class to go to a strings program instead of being in, in their class that they're all, already scheduled for.
Right.
Remember, students at the elementary level are scheduled every period, they don't have any study halls, so if you're gonna do something like that, you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to work through, what class are we gonna pull them out of?
So the after probably work, or before, after.
Before and after, that's, that's the reason why it went before and after.
Good point.
Yep.
Mr. Rarick, what do you think?
I think it's the committee's choice, I think we need the program regardless and how, how we do it, I think is the question.
Yeah, I feel very strongly that we need to keep the program, I go to, always go to the concerts and the parents are very involved, they love it, their children, so, um, somehow, I think we have to keep the program, the continuity of it.
So I, the committee would need to give me direction as to how they would like to proceed on this.
Mr. Burgundy?
I think that number one is probably the first thing to pursue, which is trying to find a volunteer group, if this does not, uh, succeed, then we have to look at the secondary. I think this is a natural choice.
I can look to, to try to find a group or someone that would volunteer, but if not, does the committee want to see a second option as far as?
Yeah, do you want to look into this outside group that?
It's, I, I think, uh, you know, I hope we can find somebody that would be willing to volunteer, but, um, you also have to assume you won't be able to, so, you probably should have two paths to pursue before I come back with, you know, a recommendation.
It would be three, either three mornings or three afternoons a week?
I think that would be, yes, it'd be either in the morning or afternoon.
But it's a, uh, once at a school.
We would follow the same, we would follow the same model that we've been using, I, I think, you know, if parents wanted in the morning, I think what we should try to obviously accommodate, as you mentioned, you know, do I, did the parents that are involved in the program, did they like it in the morning or would they like to see it in the afternoon?
First, first we have to accommodate the volunteer.
Right, no, I, I understand that.
This person is gonna be like, oh, into mornings, that everyone else is to kind of fall into.
Right, but it's still, you know, if we can get somebody, we talk to them and then take the, that morning-afternoon question after.
What if, um, there's an outside group that would come in but would like to charge a small fee?
I think we just have, that's what I'm saying, is that, is, do you want a second option?
That's why I think that's what Bill's question was.
No, not the kids, it's, we would.
Yeah, I guess it would depend on what the.
Fee is.
Yeah, to the, again, I, I think you, we need to look down that line, but we also have, and I'm not saying negotiations could end, because we haven't even started, you know, be done by the start of school, but we certainly could be done in the fall, after school starts, and this could, you know, then.
This could be resolved.
You know, in other words, I think the committee would need, I can do both options, look at them, come back, the committee is eventually gonna have to decide, we're gonna go one year regardless of what contract says or negotiations do, we're going this path and then have the contract reflect that, say, starting in the fif, uh, the fifteen, sixteen school year, this stipend for strings or however it's structured in the, you know, teaching schedule would begin then, in, in the second year of the, or actually the first year of the contract, because it wouldn't be in for this year, it'd be for next year anyway, so that's when the new contract would start. Deb, if you can email me the, or have those folks contact me and.
Yeah, because it may be that we can't find a volunteer and they're not really an option and we have to then come back and think something else.
Amy?
I just want to say, I would anticipate that if it's not a volunteer position and there is even a nominal amount paid, the union probably would have some issue.
That's fine.
With that.
That's fine. Okay.
So I'll just try to put something together and bring it hopefully back for the, for our next meeting.
Our second thing is band and jazz band scheduling, Mrs. Herman?
I put this on, uh, at the request of, um, some band parents, I know that, um, since our last meeting, guidance has worked hard and, um, managed to, uh, schedule additional students, um, into jazz band in particular, but, um, the parents who contacted me indicated that they still have general questions about, um, and concerns about the scheduling of music ensembles that they wanted to bring to our attention and discuss.
Mrs. Black, could we have?
Ms. Nichols, please.
Lynn, could you come up and just explain to the committee?
From guidance.
What we've talked about, what the scheduling process is, so, both parents who may be unfamiliar with the situation, um, and the school committee, so if you could. What's this? What are we looking at?
That's what the parents are gonna talk about.
I don't, it's not, whatever, go ahead, Lynn.
Okay.
She just wrote down her comment.
Well, I, hopefully, if I give you this general information, that you'll get a clearer picture in a nutshell of what master scheduling is about, it's a very complicated process, but, um, because of the size of our school, we have a very small school, uh, with very few students, so a lot of the times, um, classes will be sing, what I call singletons, they'll have, there's not enough kids, so there's only one single period for each class, and there's always conflicts, every year, for the last twenty years that I've been here, we always have students, maybe, off the top of my head, fifteen to twenty percent that have to, after I build the master schedule, I hand it over to my counselors, they meet with their counselors and they work through any conflicts they may have, and like I said, the way the school is set up, because it's so small, we don't have the luxury of having two to three periods of English, jazz, well, English we do, but say physics honors or AP classes, those are all singles, so there's always conflicts. In this situation with jazz, there were nineteen students that originally signed up for jazz, there are twelve students scheduled right now, so out of the remaining seven students, all these parents have been contacted, I've spoken to several myself, the guidance counselors have, we met with the students to try to work through this, they have a choice to make, and this is, I think, what the bottom line is, and it's, as difficult as it is, as for students and parents, they all have to make a choice, whether they want to keep an academic class or a jet, or the, uh, music class, but I need to tell you, all nineteen students have concert band in their schedule, so they always, they all have one period of band already, so what they're looking to do is take a second music, a second period of music, so what happens there, something else has to go, um, like I said, in, in the perfect world, they'd all get two periods of music and all their academics too, I wish I could do that, I wish I could make that happen, because if I could push a button and make that happen, I would have already done so, so unfortunately, choices have to be made with those singletons, um, out of the seven, four students, um, have made it their decision in keeping the academic classes because of their future college plans, they decided to keep physics honors, they decided to keep a Spanish four, um, I think there were two physics honors kids. The master schedule, when I build a master schedule, it tells me where the best place is to place a course with the least amount of conflicts, so when I look at jazz and it says period seven, it's telling me the least amount of conflicts are there, so if I move it to period five, some people are under the impression there's a period five floating out there that's gonna work, it's gonna give me more conflicts, I could move it, but then you have another cohort of fifteen kids that have conflicts, okay, so, moving it is, if I could have moved it and solved this problem, I would, would have already done that, so, when I say that, and I don't mean to be rude when I say that, I've, I spend months working on this, the guidance counselors spend months communicating with students and parents to give them the best-case scenario, so, the, the three remaining students, I think, might be in limbo, there may be, they're not in jazz right now, but I think they maybe wanted to come to this meeting and voice their concerns and maybe get clarity, I'm hoping they're getting clarity, um, but, if it's down to three, I think that's pretty good, in my opinion, um.
Also, talk about the strings, how it was scheduled, so there wouldn't be a conflict.
And actually, we do have, the thing is, I think it's making it more complicated because we do have so many options for music now, we have chorus, we have strings, these are all separate periods, uh, Mr. Alves asked me to split, uh, the strings and band period, they were, they, they were the same last year, that was an issue for him, um, because of room and everything, or he wanted kids to have an option of maybe doing strings and band, which I understood, I switched it for next year, so they have guitar, they have piano, jazz, strings, concert and jazz, so it just makes it that much more difficult for kids to, if they want to take more than one period, it's difficult because something has to go, there's only seven periods in the day, so.
And are students still given the option of taking band every other day opposite gym as they used to?
Yes, and some kids, students, some students do that, mhm, and some take every other, uh, everyday jazz or every other day band and vice versa, a lot of kids do that, so they have a period and a half, and now with that new block schedule that we talked about last, um, school committee meeting, they're actually getting more band, so for that third slot, they're getting eighty minutes of band now, or eighty minutes of jazz, so they're actually in the rotating cycle getting more, uh, hours of band, so, I mean, I don't know what to say to make this go away or make it better, but I think, um, and I need to say, my guidance counselors communicate with parents and then we've talked to parents about this, and I wish I could say, I could make it easier, I know I have a child here too, I wish that he could get every single thing he wanted in his schedule, he's already had to make a choice, so, you know, I can bring up Mr. Fazette's daughter, Lauren, he, he gave me permission to do that, um, and I think he. to do that, and I think he, he spoke to maybe you Carol about it, I don't remember. His daughter, for two years in a row, wanted to stay in band and she stayed in band and she opted out of a fourth year of a science, she only had three years of science, and she opted out of a third year of a foreign language. So, and she had to make decisions too, she's doing very well now. And it's just a matter of a choice, whether they want, you know, a second, like I said, a second period of, of music or they, kids have options of changing levels of courses, to get jazz in, so there are ways to get jazz in, it's just the choice that they have to make.
And I, I know another option is for students to take a class at BCC to fulfill a requirement. I did want to make sure that parents know that they do not pay for those BCC classes, that was a misunderstanding that I heard.
Well, if it's part of, if it's part of dual enrollment and they qualify.
Right.
They have the opportunity to take one class.
Right, so for, and you, if there's a conflict, do they generally then qualify for dual enrollment or what would?
That is an option for students.
Right, and.
We, we haven't had to do that yet, but that is an option.
Yeah, and, and so then parents are only responsible for getting their students to BCC, usually it's once a week, but there's no additional cost to the family.
There is cost, unless they're in the dual enrollment program, which we haven't used yet. So people do have to.
Dual enrollment, no, if they, if they qualify, then there's no cost for a course.
How do, I didn't realize that some students do not qualify for dual enrollment.
Yeah, why would you not?
You have to have a certain GPA, you have to have a 3.0 or better.
Oh, okay, and, and is that it then, the only?
Anything else other than a 3.0 for dual enrollment? Yeah, I think that was it.
Yep, he did it.
Yep, okay, so if your student has a 3.0 or higher GPA, there's no cost.
And that's from the school, that's from BCC's side.
Yeah, right, yeah, I just had to get them there. You have a senior that drives, they can get there.
Yeah, but it looks like you worked really hard to, to work this out and. I try. Provide opportunities. I mean, it is, the master schedule is student-driven, so wherever the, the needs are of the students, that's how it's built, so, I mean, teachers can come request that they teach first period and I just tell them to go away because it's student-driven, if it all fits better second period, that's where they're going to be teaching, so I revolve it around the students and I thought that, you know, we did our best doing that. Anybody on the, any parents would like to speak about it?
Yes. It's a software program we use.
Software programs?
So I'm Kelly Levesque, this is Taffa Rusty.
Hi.
We volunteer to be the spokespeople for all, most of the concerns of parents and students that we've heard. We also have Hannah Hoyle here as a student who's going to speak about her own personal experiences. This is kind of just a general overall. I will say that my son, as a disclaimer, my son is one of the seven who has to choose between honors geometry, honors geometry and jazz, and he had to make the same choice last year as a freshman. He had to choose between his honors physical science class and jazz. Both years he has chosen to stay in the science curriculum. I have even encouraged him to drop down to the college prep level and he does not want to hear it, so he's very steadfast in his decision.
And Tyler, my son Tyler, he has had the same choice, he has opted to drop down to prep. This year, it's, he's in one of the ones of the honors physics and against jazz, or it's prep physics against band. So, right now, he's thinking of going the honors physics because he's going to be an engineer. That's the plan.
So what I did to start out was I called, I went on ride and I looked at comparable high schools to our number, to our number of students, and I, there are five basically in the state of Rhode Island. Rogers is the only one in the East Bay area. I was able to call two of the guidance offices and actually speaks to guidance counselors about what they do for scheduling. And as, you know, as a high school student, I thought I wanted to be a guidance counselor and I wish that I had because they got into their lingo and I was a little lost at times, but I did take notes and I wrote them because I'm sure that our guidance people will understand what AB scheduling is because I didn't know what that was. So one of them has an AB schedule and what, somebody has a four by four modified block schedule. But it was interesting, they both stressed that music students are scheduled first. The one woman talked about, let me see, oh, cross-sectional, so she said music encompasses all grades and every student basically can touch any student from the special ed's all the way up to the AP students. And it's also a singleton class, so that it's very important that you schedule all of that first. The people at Narragansett, she had a very nice program, she said that they move the band class if it's actually conflicting with anything, and then when, as she kept talking, I stopped her and I said, can I ask how many people are in your class, and she said 27. So I thought that was lower than the numbers that we're dealing with, but actually when I heard 19 today, I was like, ooh, right in the ballpark. So then I also talked to two guidance counselors at middle school level, especially at our own middle school here, and I was told that at middle school here, they are scheduling what they call singletons, which is the academic Spanish class, and also the music students first before they schedule anyone else. And then I just recapped basically what we've been talking about as parents and as students. Obviously, it's not all my questions, but I am speaking for everybody. And thank you, Mrs. Nichols, for explaining how the scheduling works. Do, do music students actually get scheduled first? No, I've talked to these supporters a million times, I know that Justin stuck and Justin made his decision.
Kelly, Kelly.
You have to talk to the committee?
We need you to talk to the school committee, please.
So, they, so question is, are mus, are music students here scheduled first? If not, is it possible that they could be scheduled first since they have little to no wiggle room in their schedules? Is it possible to block two periods out of seven?
Excuse me, is this going to be an inquisition?
It's just a question.
Or what's the best way?
I'm not even asking for answers.
Right, we may not.
Well, then can we respond to them, please, one by one?
If you want.
I don't want them to go unchallenged or unanswered. Lynn, how are we scheduled?
Phil, please, I, I don't, I feel, I feel a little aggression here, I don't think we need to see that way with our parents.
All this should have come through us, and we could have addressed this.
Okay, but they're here tonight and we let our parents and we let our residents, we let our taxpayers, we let anyone come, we'll talk about the protocol in the next section. But I think we just need to take a breath and, and I understand, you're absolutely correct that you, if you want to respond to them, but I just, we're all on the same team here and I think we just need to remember that. Go ahead, Kelly.
Well, I'll wait to see, should I go?
It's not. Please run the meeting.
Sure. Go ahead. Is it possible to put, to block two periods in the seven and say there's no honors or AP classes that could happen for two periods?
Can I just address that one?
Sure.
It's not only honors and AP students that take band, do you know what I mean? So, so you're going to schedule prep classes those periods, but now those prep kids, even the general level kids will get blocked out of band, if that's all.
Okay. So Mrs. Levesque, could you, I think that you could probably work this out with, with Guidance and with the superintendent because I don't think we should be doing that here, I don't think this is the form for that. I, I want to know your concerns and I want to know what doesn't fit and everything in general.
Can we just have Lynn answer the questions as they come?
All right, all right.
Okay, well, here's an important one, I think. Rosters are not released to Mr. Alves so that he doesn't know, so if my son did decide to take jazz and the jazz class ended up 10 drummers and my kid on a clarinet, that's not really a jazz class, it's a drum sectional. So we're asking people to make a choice, but at the same time, we're not sure that the classes are even viable. So maybe it would be, it would be helpful if, if there's prerequisites and there's testing and we have to test into these places, that we could actually know, you know, who's going to be in the class and if the class is viable with the mix of instruments that are in there.
Can Lynn answer that, please?
Can I, can I, I'm curious to see why, ask why a parent would know when teachers get rosters, why teachers get rosters and who gets rosters and who doesn't get rostered, why is that?
Guys, we're, we're getting told, okay, we have two issues.
No, random, random information's coming out that has a lot to do with me and it's misinformation. And I've got a job to do, I'm told to do a job by my administration, told who gets rosters and for what reason.
But I'm not going to have, I'm not, agree, I'm not going to have staff and, and parents, I mean.
This is not the forum.
I don't think any of us should, and I agree Lynn, I, but I think there's two issues. It sounds like there's individual scheduling issues, which we.
Right, we don't.
I mean, that's not, and then it sounds to me like there's programming issues, like.
The question about rosters, rosters aren't given to any department until the end of the year. That's just a practice they've had to answer the question.
But legitimately, and I'm not, and again, I haven't, this is, I'm looking at all of this for the first time with you. Ensembles are a little bit different because you have, you do have to have to.
Right.
You know, you have to have a soprano, a second soprano.
Could I just ask you a basic question, what is statutory role of the school committee?
Well, that's why I separated.
To micromanage things?
No, that's why I separated programming from individuals.
Unless this is a complaint from parents of the issue which has not been resolved with the administration, then we step in, we only act as a body which, if something cannot be resolved.
Right, well, they did, they reached out to Mrs.
If there's a, if there's a formal complaint, then that's what's scheduled.
There was.
Formal complaint to the community.
They called Mrs. Herman, so are you saying that school, parents can't, I mean, again, it's, it's a protocol. So you're saying if a parent comes to me or you or Sally or Jerry, we simply say, I'm sorry, we can't, you can't be on our agenda, they asked Mrs. Herman to put it on the agenda, Mr. Pagani, were we going to say no?
But I think we'll talk in general about the program.
Well, that's why I said I'm separating the individual scheduling issue.
The question is, you can't give rosters until everyone's schedule's done, I mean, that's why we wait, because then Lynn and Guidance would be redoing schedules constantly, you know, throughout the period up and, you're still doing it. Sure, you know it better than I do.
Rosters go out to, not that I need to be saying this, but I need to clarify, rosters go out to teachers before they enter school for honors level classes because they have to hand out summer work. Those are the people that get rosters because we are still moving schedules. Students have failed courses, they're going to summer school, we have to move them back to the course that they failed during the school year, I balance classes, if there's a 11 honors class that has 20, there's an 11 honors class that has 10, I try to shift some students to make it, to make them even. So if I give someone a roster June 24th, third, when they leave, their roster may not be the same September 1st. That's why, it's not accurate, it's a waste of everybody's time.
But we are giving a roster and they're subject to change.
They're subject to change, yes.
Because I think that ensembles would have the same kind of need, like I said, you can't, you can't, if we're going to commit to teaching chorus and having a chorus program, then you need to have altos for sopranos and second sopranos, I mean, it's the same issue of trying to balance honors, you need to balance the ensemble, I mean, and that's very unique to an ensemble, so I could see they would have the same need at the same time you hand out.
So I don't know how that works, I don't know when everybody's choosing, if that, chosen, if that's in June, if that's in the summer, if that's in the, in September, I don't know how that works. But there are still kids shifting around, we have new, new kids coming in, there's no summer work.
Right, so they would be just like the honors ones that you hand out, that it would be subject to change.
I guess that could work that way.
But that's all I'm trying to get at.
Maybe if, maybe if, that was explained to me when I was asked to provide rosters, not that I need them for a school committee meeting because there's irate parents.
Oh. So, so I think the, the main issue here is what we talk about in organizational structure, I've been doing this 10 years, when a parent calls me, right away I tell them I'll be calling the superintendent. I always say to them, just go to the teacher, go to the guidance counselor, go to the superintendent, we're the last bastion right here, this is when nothing else works out, you know, when, when it's absolutely the end of your rope and you can't get anything done, just, just to say that, I think that's a structure that's been set up by the state and our authority. So we don't mind listening to you and I understand if you have something that you want to fit somewhere. I had six kids go through GMS, it wasn't easy trying to balance them all into what they wanted and, and I think the guidance is doing a good job, but we don't mind you coming with your concerns because we won't know what you're having if you don't come. But I don't want to try to work it out here is what I'm trying to say, because this isn't the venue for that, because then we're micromanaging and I won't be part of that.
But I think we just saw something good come out of this discussion. Namely, it wasn't clear why it would be helpful to have initials, rosters for music groups, and now that it's understood that it is important, those rosters will be shared with music groups just like with some of the other teachers, even though they're, we know they're not yet fixed in stone. And, and I think that's one benefit to having everybody get in the room together and share ideas and experiences because we learn things.
I, I don't disagree, but again, I can't emphasize enough the importance of being given the opportunity to address the concerns.
Like purpose, right.
What was just discussed about the honors and being similar to the ensembles for the rosters, had that been conveyed, this is the first, that's why I asked what this was. This is the first I've seen of this or heard of this, okay? I know Lynn hasn't seen it, I know Steve certainly is unaware of it. So yes, if, there is a time and a place where the group needs to come together to try to solve something, I'm just trying to emphasize that we need the opportunity to try to solve it first.
Right.
And then, if we can't solve it or someone's unhappy with our answer or response, obviously, this is the venue for that. My frustration lies in that it wasn't brought to us to try to settle, that's all I'm trying, that's my position.
Which, which is why I put, I agree, Bill, which is why I put three on, because I do think there's some confusion in the process, I think there's confusion.
Procedures.
Just procedures.
And I do agree completely, obviously, parents are, we need to listen to them, so if I was short, I do apologize, but it's the people that seem to not be involved in the process, so I apologize for that.
Well, and in general, I think what you'll find, and I know you guys know this because you've been having many, many kids, the closer you are to the child, the easier the solution being teacher, principle, I mean, I think you both like understand that.
Because that's, I did, I went from, I emailed.
Yes.
I emailed Mrs. Nichols and then I sent another email, Mr. McKinnon, and I also copied Mr. Fazette on that and Mr. Fazette responded, and I apologize, Mr. Rarick, I did not, I copied you on, on every.
You're the, thank you, you're the only person who at least expressed.
Okay, all right.
Your concern was, you were the only person that I.
Because I was expressing about my child.
Right, and I asked Steve to, right, and I asked Steve to address you.
Okay.
I think, I think in the future, when this comes to three, but it's kind of between these two issues, we have to have some threshold of proof that everything has been done and this thing qualifies to be heard by school.
Well, that's why we have the superintendent and the chair supposed to go through the agenda.
So, so we don't have this cross talk here where people exchange information in front of us trying to solve the problem and so, and apparently, because if we, if we create, and I, I'm glad that you put this number three, that we type out these procedures, because otherwise, if someone does not say, I don't, I don't think I would like the answer from the superintendent, let me go to the school committee, we will be basically running the district to you on the basis.
But again, I don't, that's, that's, that's.
That actually is, they should come to us, that's a perfectly legitimate reason to come to us.
If it comes to me.
So even they don't know what's going on.
I understand, but without asking.
Yeah, yes, well, I'm asking.
I might not like your answer, let me go directly.
You're going to assume what, right.
But I, I would push back a little bit on the chair and the superintendent, these things come to you first and, and I realize Mrs. Herman put it on it, so it puts you in a little bit of a funny position, but, you know, we have two people that set the agenda and maybe the, the conversation would have been, well, Carol, can you wait while I?
Well, I think Mr. Rarick sent, let's notice this.
I'm going to reach out to Tempo in this group and I'm going to have a meeting first and then I'll come back, you know.
And for the record, for that whole time, Carol did send me a brief review of what some of the concerns were of the parents, but I still, from the time Carol asked for the item to be placed on the agenda, no one from the music department, no parents other than Mr. Thoreste sent anything to me.
So we'll be better communicating with you.
I guess just so that we're clear, as far as what was communicated and what wasn't. Mr. Fazette didn't receive anything, obviously, but he still receives his emails, Mr. McKinnon did not, and I know Mrs. Nichols didn't, so the ones that were, are responsible for helping parents really weren't included.
Because I don't ever want a parent to think, or a resident for that matter, a taxpayer, to think they can't come directly to a school committee member because you can.
Yes, absolutely.
But we may have to tell you, do you do this, did you do this, because like. Because like.
I think that's what three is for, on the agenda.
Right, right. And, and.
Just to straighten it out.
And it, and if there is a misunderstanding, and one of us asks to have something on the agenda, again, it's gotta be a little bit of pushback to say, well, maybe, maybe the superintendent could meet with the boosters club or.
Before we do that.
Right.
Because you'd hate to, you don't wanna tell someone that can't have something on the agenda either. Mr. Algeas, you having?
All right, let's go. Oh, yeah, just, yeah, a couple.
I'm sorry, you finished.
I wanted to address that one statement about having a roster before the school committee. The only reason that it was asked is so I could have accurate information if who was actually in the class. That's the only reason I asked for that. I was just trying to, you know, be proactive, so to speak. As the director of bands here, I kinda need to know what instrumentation I have just to run the curriculum. The jazz band curriculum is all designed around a big band setting. If I don't have instrumentation to, to enforce, or to, or to actually, you know, run a big band, I'd have to redo the whole curriculum, assessments and everything. Because all the assessments are based on performances. If we can't go out and perform, you see what I'm getting at? So it all comes down to whether I know if I have the instrumentation for the band to actually run. And I need that information.
Yeah. That was my point about the ensembles.
Exactly.
They're unique.
Whether it does, it just does not run that, that, that class, and that's fine. I mean, I'm not, I'm not telling you what to do. You guys are the bosses. But I just wanna make everybody aware that if that class does not run, I have to change every, every assessment. There's public relations things, Mrs. Van Arach, who showed up, who does a lot of our public relations, and there's, there's fallout if that class doesn't run, or any of, any of those band classes don't run. And the asking of the schedules, I didn't think it was that big a deal, honestly, guys. I just asked for a, for a roster, because I had a bunch of people call me and say, I don't know if my kid's in jazz, I don't know if my kid's in band, students are coming for me. So instead of calling 10,000 people, I figured I'd go to the sauce and just say, give me a roster so I know if I can win it. That's all I said.
All right, well, you guys can work that out together with Mr. Fizette.
Exactly.
And Mr. Rarick, this is not the place for my.
Do you have any other parents or anybody else that wants to speak?
It's a valid point, though.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak?
Thank you, Ms. Al. Hannah, you don't wanna come up anymore?
Hannah, come on up.
Hannah's letter is very personal, but it's extremely well-written, so I think she should go over it.
But if you're gonna think it's too personal, I don't.
It's her own personal.
Yeah, I don't know where you wanna go with it now.
She has a right to speak, Michael. Come on, come on.
Lynn, could you just address Al?
Thank you.
What's that?
Please address the committee and not.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's just, it's upsetting. And I just wanted to, I just.
I stand there, please.
I just wanted to add.
Call for you guys as well.
I just wanted to add my opinion, because I did a little investigating myself, and there's several, and this might solve the problem in the future, not for next year, but a lot of schools in high, um, the state of Rhode Island have, do not have jazz during the day, along with concert band. They have jazz prior to school, just like strings, and jazz after school, like we used to have it before. And we had a lot fewer problems when jazz was after school. So that's something to maybe think about for future.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello, everyone. So just a quick disclaimer, I'm just a student expressing my opinions. I'm not involved at all in the politics of this. I'm just a student explaining what it was like to be.
That's what, who will.
A jazz student. That's, yeah. That's what, that's what you're expressing.
You're not a jazz student.
Don't say jazz student.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Very important.
Um, oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know, my name is Hannah Hoyle. I'm going into my senior year at Tiverton High School, and I play saxophone in the Tiverton Jazz Ensemble. I was recently reading the Boston Globe newspaper, and I found an article that I couldn't pass up. There was a lot of controversy hovering over the Division One North baseball semifinals in Massachusetts a few weeks ago, due to the fact that the game was scheduled on the same day as the SATs. And when the Massachusetts Interscholastic League was confronted and asked to change the date of the crucial game, they refused, and the boys had to play the game without half of their starting lineups. Now, was this fair? Was it fair that the varsity baseball players who had worked excruciatingly hard to make it to the semifinals and then have to choose between their academic future and their favorite passion? After spending some time thinking about their situation, I realized that I really understood these baseball players. And then I realized that something like this doesn't have to make national news for it to be happening. And as most people don't know, it's happening in our very own high school. Many of our jazz students may not be able to take the period seven class next year due to the placement of honors physics, honors Spanish four, and honors geometry. We are being forced, like the Division One North baseball players, to choose between our passion and our own academic futures. This heartbreaking problem could easily be solved by moving jazz to a different period in our seven-period cycle. Our jazz band contains an extremely special group of students, and to prove it to you, I would like to share a story. After winning third place in the National Berklee Jazz Festival last year, there was a lot of pressure on our band to place third or higher when we entered the competition again in the 2013-2014 school year. As we walked into the adjudication room, stress was running high. We were playing college-level pieces, and it was all or nothing. Our performance was going fantastically, until all of a sudden someone by accident leaned against the light switch of the windowless room. The entire adjudication room went pitch black. And instead of standing up, complaining, or saying that we deserve a redo, the Tiverton Jazz Ensemble played on. And despite the minor light switch dilemma, we came in third place for Tiverton yet again. In the Tiverton Jazz Band, we represent a high level of maturity that many bands cannot live up to. When we attend the Somerset Berklee Regional Jazz Festival, they put our performance time as late as they can because they want as many people to see the Tiverton Jazz Band as possible. We've played at the gallery in Dartmouth malls, various elderly homes, and many competitions over the years. And after being with this group of people for three years, I can honestly say that whenever we wear our black Tiverton music shirts, we wear them with pride and represent Tiverton in the best way that we can. Today, I am speaking on behalf of all of us who are affected by this choice between the mind and the heart. But maybe if I briefly discuss my background, our situation will become a bit more realistic. Both sides of my family, McGlynn and Hoyle, attended this high school. We are a family of senior class presidents, Hall of Famers, and band members. But what is different about me is that I am an only child who was given the option to attend Bishop Stang High School. I'll be honest, private school did sound tempting, but what was even more tempting was being a part of Tiverton's award-winning jazz band. And as you can tell, I made the right decision by choosing Tiverton High School over any private school. But losing our award-winning jazz band over an easily fixable scheduling mishap was never a part of my plan. Over the course of my three years as a student at Tiverton High School, I have experienced many awesome opportunities. But one of my most prestigious and honorable moments so far was when I won a scholarship competition at the University of Rhode Island for women who are going into careers of science. I can honestly say that there were smarter girls with computer engineering majors who didn't get the scholarship, but I did. I wrote my entry essay on the powerful relationship between music and science, and as a hopeful nursing major, this made complete sense to me. It's easy for people to say, quit jazz, it won't get you anywhere, but physics will. But when I volunteer on a psychiatric unit with a man who is experiencing a post-traumatic stress disorder flashback from the Vietnam War, and he only calms down once I play him a jazz song, I would beg to differ. And having to choose between getting into nursing school and playing saxophone in the Tiverton Jazz Band is too hard of a choice for me to make. So I realize that I'm asking for a lot, and it may inconvenience a few people, but at least now you understand the, the effect that the Tiverton Jazz Band has on our community. And to watch this prosperous group fall would be one of the saddest things for myself and the other students who have worked so hard to endure. So think about it. Should members of the Tiverton Jazz Band be forced to go through the same thing as the Massachusetts Division One North baseball players? Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you all have a fantastic evening.
Thank you.
So Superintendent Rarick, you're on this?
Guess so.
I know. Thank you.
Now that, well, now that we have some issues, we'll obviously work with our parents on addressing their concerns.
And thank you, Lynn, for everything you've done.
Thank you, parents.
And the parents for coming and sharing. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, um.
It's me. We already touched on this a little bit, but there, there has been a lot of confusion. One of the confusion, one of the first things that I found confusion on, online, was, there was an understanding that like the town council, they could just, people could just show up at the meeting and just speak. And so, just wanted to clarify for everyone that we do not have an open forum.
We need to, that's one of the policies.
We probably need to address the policy, decide if we want one, if we don't want one.
We have one, but it needs.
Seven, it's, it's still.
Policy or an open forum?
No, we have an open forum policy.
But it needs some work, right?
Yes, agreed.
Yeah.
It does.
So we should probably readdress that, decide if we want one, if we don't want one. I mean, I think Chair and Black and Superintendent are very liberal with letting people speak and be on agendas, and maybe too much so to our, we're now seeing, but, but we've been very liberal about that. The other thing is, there was a comment, to seven days in advance, correct Bill, to be on the agenda, you have to fill out an agenda request?
Yeah, what we do is we take it up until the Friday before, then, you know, when we go to publish.
What might be helpful.
Is our actual practice.
Is on our school committee site. I know it's in the policies, but to pull that one out and maybe have it on our website so you can read the policy, and you'll have the agenda request right when you go to the school committees, and it'll be right there. I think people would find that helpful.
Okay.
So that they know that, okay, this is what I do, this is the process. And then just to reiterate what I said again about, and it's, and it's not because we don't wanna talk to the super, it's just, it's just better when things are as close to the kid as you can get them, because that's the people that know the students the better. That's why it's, it's teachers, building principals, superintendent, you know, that, because the closer you are to the kid, the more expertise, the more, you know, administrators, the more, you know, it's just, they're more familiar with the program there, you know, especially for those of us that may not have kids in the system anymore, that, that's just, it's just, in general, it's just a better way to proceed. And that's kinda all I had on that.
I just, if there's any question, we revised policy 223, code ethics with school board numbers, and then there's an addendum. Think of periodically.
Yeah, is that, does that replace it, or is that an addendum?
No, that's the whole thing. It's four pages. I think it's, especially number seventeen on the addendum, explains about complaints.
And those policies were written, in my opinion, by some very thoughtful people at the time.
This one was written by us.
Very nice.
Two twenty-three was written by us, right?
No, no, I mean, the ones from nineteen ninety-three.
Yeah, but two twenty.
Well, no, which one was written?
Seventeen is.
The early ones.
Two twenty-three.
The one in our packet is the outdated one.
Right, the one I emailed you is the.
Right, and then we have the email one.
Then we made those changes to the website.
Right, right, and it's always a, a good reminder to, so that was all I had for that.
So basically, we do have the protocol.
We do.
So we just need to.
Does anyone have any, anything that, well, I can be honest.
Anybody else have?
No, I, again, going back to what I said before, there has to be some threshold which has to be met by someone who comes to us with specific complaints. So that means I have this particular complaint, this is what has been done, and that's why I have to go in front of you because I was not able to resolve it, and that's what we did. And before it goes on the agenda, we have to verify with everyone involved that that's the case, and then.
Well, I, I speak to Mr. Rarick every morning, in case anyone wonders if things are verified, so.
Yeah, but it's, as we.
I'm just saying, if it hasn't come to him.
Some emails were missing, this one was informed, someone else was excluded. It's not for us to deal with that.
That's not, that's what I said.
We'll deal with it if we have to.
Of course, of course we will.
What, what I do, just so the committee's clear, and Elaine is the first person folks usually talk to, is have you talked to the teacher?
Right.
Have you talked to the principal? And ninety-nine percent of the cases, the answer to one or both is no. So we try to redirect, and Elaine says, please contact those people, and if you can't work it out, then call back. So if we get the call back, or the parent will say, I've done that already, well, then, then I step in because it's already been addressed at the lower levels. And so when things come through us, that's, you know, that's what we try to do. And I always tell parents, you know, you have every right to go to the school committee with my decision. I mean, that's just the way it works. The, the, the question is, when it comes to the committee, when you get the calls, do they, do you say, I understand your concern, but have you spoken to the superintendent? Have you spoken to Mr. Fizette, or Mrs. Dias Mitchell, or whatever? And I think this is what Jan is saying. If that hasn't happened, you know, or at least try to redirect it that way. Is that, am I speaking for you?
Although sometimes you're told, yes, I have, so.
It's still.
Right.
Doesn't, you know, email me or call me.
Exactly, then reach out and say, hey, this is what I, you know.
And again, ninety-nine percent of the time, they have, if they've said that.
Exactly, but then, right, exactly, I agree.
And to make it even simpler, we can have a form with checkboxes. This issue concerned this, contacted this.
I, I don't think we need to do that. I wouldn't be in favor of that, but.
And Mrs. Pavel does a wonderful job, by the way, of filtering all the calls out to everyone. She's very thoughtful.
I certainly don't wanna make it harder for people to reach their elected officials.
No, not at all. And it's not meant to, to, to.
I know, I know, but a checkbox.
In order to conduct our business correctly, we cannot undermine authority of those who work for us.
And I don't believe anybody is.
Well, I understand.
You may disagree.
But I understand. But if we have these type of discussions here, and people bring this to us before they bring it to the superintendent of schools or a principal, unless there is some violation of issues which are beyond their control, for example, it could be a harassment situation, it could be someone breaking the law, then maybe you should go straight to us. But if this is something purely procedure or things like scheduling, I don't think[1552.83] of issues which are beyond their control, for example, it could be a harassment situation, it could be someone breaking the law, then maybe you should go straight to us. But if this is something purely procedure or things like scheduling, I don't think we should be involved unless someone says, "There's a bedwill here," or "There is a problem, a student cannot get the proper education," but not, not at this level. And we dealt before, like, two or three years ago, is with, in middle school, we had a problem with scheduling.
Yeah, a while ago.
And the parents were actually asking that they will come and help us to schedule classes. It's, where does this end? You know what I mean?
So does anyone else have anything they want to say about it?